All right, let's call the order of the Sparks City Council meeting for Monday, January tenth, with a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Lawson?
Here.
Council members Abbott?
Here.
Vanderwell?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
City Manager Croods?
Here.
Chief Assistant City Attorney Duncan?
Here.
We have a forum, sir.
Okay, let's start off with our invocation speaker, Rajan Zett.
Today is the first meeting of 2022. We pray that we all work in unison during 2022 for the well-being and prosperity of the great city of Sparks. Starting with Gayatri mantra, which is considered the most sacred mantra of Hinduism, I shall be reading from ancient Hindu scriptures and Sanskrit, some as old as 1500 BCE, and then interpret in English. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvah, Tatsavitavare Nam, Vargodhivas Dhimahi, Diyo Yona Prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamaya, Tamsoma Jyotirgamaya, Amritya or Mamrata Gamaya. Lead us from the unreal to the real, lead us from darkness to light, lead us from death to immortality. Tasmada Saktastatham, Krem Karma Samachara, Asakto Hya Charan Karma, Paramapunati Pursha. Karma Nava He Samshiddi, Mastita Jankada Ya. Loka Sangre Ha Mewa Pisa Pa Shankar Tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. By devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Vavtu Sahana Bonaktu Sahaviren Karva Bahai, Jasvi Navadita Mastu Ma Bidhvisa Bahai. May we be protected together, may we be nourished together, may we work together with great vigor, may our study be enlightening, may no obstacle arise between us. Saamneva Kuti Saamna Hirdyaniva, Samnamastu Vomano Yathava Soosahasti. United your resolve, united your hearts, may your spirits be at one, that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Crawford, will you lead us in the pledge? Be it its National Law Enforcement Awareness Week?
Let's elevate the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We move on to public comment. And we have Christine Garvey, you're up. Come on down here, have a seat, the microphone will light up green. And you'll have three minutes. And please state your name for the record, Ford, please.
Christine Garvey, I live at seventeen oh one C Street. That is on the corner of Rock and C Street, and I am here to speak on item nine point three and also another concern at the end of the meeting. That area has multiple weekly motels and apartments. It's a high-density rental area. It's also designated as a high-crime area. There are forty-nine sex offenders that are registered within a two-mile radius of my home. In the last year, our cellar has been broken in by homeless and occupied and vandalized. We've had a fire two doors down that burnt both the garage at that residence and next door to us. We've also have, on any given day, fifteen to twenty-five homeless people migrate, loiter, panhandle, publicly are drunk or on drugs, to the point they are passed out on the sidewalk or in the alleyway. Several display what no doubt is mental illness. This literally happens two and a half feet from the exterior of my home. Therefore, I encourage the council to approve item nine point three, but with the condition that staff will present to the council every six months to report the progress of the grant activities, effectiveness of the actions, and capacity of the resource partners implemented in this program, and do so at a regular council meeting so that citizens can be informed of the substantial tax dollar investment that you are asking them to commit today. This is really important because this information needs to be available to people, not only at the meeting, but also through the minutes of your meeting if they cannot attend. And that will relate to something that I will speak on later, which is about the timeliness of responses to citizens by departments within the city and staff. I've handed out questions that I put together for a meeting that Councilman Abbott was very good and worked diligently to do for me, to answer questions after that fire. It took eighty-seven days to schedule a meeting to talk about these issues. Unfortunately, the hope officer did not attend, as they were supposed to. The city planner was late and could not stay to answer further questions. The only person that really answered every single question was the fire chief, McCubbins, who I think is a great employee. I would like to talk about that later, if I can't get everything out now. But literally, something needs to be done to be more responsive. And so I would have the council consider even, do you have a system in place to see what is the effectiveness of your staff's response to the constituency that you serve and represent? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other speaking cards, anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll pull it back to the council. And approval of the agenda, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, I would like to approve the agenda with the following changes. I would like to move seven point four and nine point one up behind item six point one, please.
Okay, I've got a motion. Mr. Dare?
A second.
A motion is second to further discussion. Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, item six point one, approval of the minutes. Looking for motion. Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting and Victorian Square Parking Workshop for December thirteenth, 2021, as presented.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's move on to nine point one. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the mayor's appointment to fill the vacancy of Sparks Municipal Court Judge, Department One, from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Gabrielle Carr, Robert DeLong, Cheryl Iding, Tobin Foose, and Allison Ormas. I'm looking for motion or discussion. Anybody?
Yes.
Mr.?
I said we don't have a recommendation.
I'll make a recommendation, since she's here. Cheryl, Cheryl Iding is my recommendation. Sorry about that. Mr. Abbott?
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Cheryl Iding to the office of the Sparks Municipal Court, Judge, Department One.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just.
Mr. Dare?
I want to, from all of us, I know, I want to thank everybody who put in to want to have this particular position. It is very important. And I know that a lot of you reached out to us, we got to talk to quite a few different ones. And so with that, as we have more positions, please continue to do so. We love that people want to join our city, we think we have the best city definitely in Nevada, I'll say that for sure. But thank you so much, and I just want to thank everyone who did that. Appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I wanted to congratulate Ms. Iding on this, and Mr. Adams is out today, but he specifically wrote me, and he wanted to tell you that he feels that the mayor and the city council made the right choice, and he looks forward to your continued service on the court. And for me, I know you were in my position prior to this, and so we look forward to working with you. And can I be the first one to call you your honor?
Well, let us, yeah, let's take a vote.
Well, yeah, now I'm really setting it up, so anyway.
I mean, it's looking good so far.
See, I can call you your honor. So congratulations, thanks.
All right. Please vote, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, so now we're going to go straight into the good parts, we can get Judge Spoo back to work. We're going to swear in Cheryl.
Walking a little hugely, Mr. Mayor, under the council. I had two back surgeries last week, but I think we'll get through this. I'm also fully vaccinated and boosted, so I think I'll take this off so I can be a little bit better for everyone's benefit.
Speak to him, I'll listen back.
Hey, Judge? Judge, we're going to ask you to put the mask on.
Okay, have it on, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We're asking our employees to do it, so, just because you're a judge.
I can abide by the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Let's continue. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity and for filling this vacancy so expeditiously and so competently. Greatly appreciate it. I just want to make just some smallish remarks, and thank also, of course, anyone else who has participated, such as Allison McCormick intensively in this process, and Mr. Croods, and so forth. This is the first new judge that's been sworn in since I was sworn in, now over fifteen years ago. These opportunities don't come along very often, so they're important. There's only two of us over there, as I have known for the last few weeks, filling two jobs. So it's a privilege, Cheryl, to make you the first in fifteen years to be a newly sworn-in judge. Judge McCarthy and I have been sworn in a couple times after reelection, but that was not new, of course. I just want to give Cheryl just a second or two to introduce family who are here, please, for this important occasion.
You know, my wonderful husband, my sister, and my daughter and her boyfriend, they're all here, so, thank you very much.
As I say, you don't get here, nor can you do the job without good family. This oath that I'm about to administer, the same oath that I take in force, members of this council particularly, and members of the state legislature take, the governor takes, to my knowledge, and the language in essence is also what the President of the United States takes. So it's not an oath taken lightly, and I'm sure Cheryl does not take it lightly. We're going to have some fun in the next few days, orienting Cheryl, although she comes with regular experience already, and we expect a quick transition to full competency and steam ahead in the court. So Cheryl, if you'll raise your right hand.
Yeah.
And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cheryl Iding.
You solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will?
That I will.
Support, protect?
Support, protect.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And government of the United States?
The government of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
And government?
And government.
Of the State of Nevada?
State of Nevada.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign?
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I?
And that I.
Will bear true?
That I will bear true.
Faith and allegiance?
Faith and allegiance.
And loyalty?
And loyalty.
To the same?
To the same.
Any ordinance?
Any ordinance.
Resolution?
Resolution.
Or law?
Or law.
Of any state?
Of any state.
Notwithstanding?
Notwithstanding.
And that I?
And that I.
Will well?
Will well.
And faithfully perform?
Faithfully perform.
All the duties?
All the duties.
Of Municipal Court Judge?
Municipal Court Judge.
For the city of Sparks?
For the city of Sparks.
County of Washoe?
County of Washoe.
State of Nevada?
State of Nevada.
On which I?
On which I.
Am about to enter?
Am about to enter.
So how we got?
Can we get a picture with you guys up here? With the council, Judge?
Thank you.
Come on up.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you, Christopher. Appreciate you serving me.
Do you want me up there too?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Come here, right here, congratulations.
Oh, yeah. It's okay, it's all.
Yeah.
It's all just begun.
Just in the middle.
Oh, you want me in the middle?
We keep our two judges together.
I swear they didn't keep horns. Oh, sorry.
Get in here.
Very good.
Do you want to drop that piece off?
No, you're all right, I've got it.
Smile.
Yeah. Smile.
How are you, ma'am?
Thanks, thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
It's a work. All right, now the hard work begins. Thank you, Judge Spoo, for coming over, and welcome to our newest judge in Cheryl Iding. All right. If you guys need to go, you're more than welcome to walk out on us. All right, let's move on to item seven, announcements, presentation, recognition, items of special interest. And let's start with National Radon Month. Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, I'll take that. Do we have anyone here for radon? I don't see anyone. So, all right, whereas radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the primary cause of lung cancer among non-smokers and the second-leading cause of lung cancer for smokers. And whereas mainly city of Sparks residents do not know about radon, but their awareness of this risk is essential for the safety and health of their families. And whereas the United States Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, estimates twenty-one thousand people in the United States die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure. And whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, and home fires combined. And whereas any home in Sparks may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not. And living in a home with an average radon level of four picocuries per liter of air poses a similar risk of developing lung cancer as smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas testing is the only way to know that the home has an elevated radon level. Testing is easy and inexpensive, and homes with elevated radon levels can be fixed once identified. And whereas United, whereas University of Nevada, Nevada, Reno Extensions Nevada Radon Education Program, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health in the EPA supports efforts to encourage all city of Sparks residents to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, the mayor of city of Sparks in Nevada, to hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-two as National Radon Action Month.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to clap for radon?
Yeah, for, against radon.
All right, item seven point two, Board of Commission Vacancy Announcements, Mr. Croods.
Mayor Lawson, members of the city council, Neil Croods, your city manager, for the record. We have three vacancies on the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Committee for alternate positions in wards two, three, and four. Each vacancy is co-terminous with the appointing elected official. Applicants must be city of Sparks residents, preferably fifty-five or older, and also preferably within the ward that they are seeking nomination, although that is not an absolute requirement. Applications will be accepted until Friday, January fourteenth, at five PM. Applications are most easily found at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved, it's all one big word. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board, Commission, or Committee. Fill out the form and press submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to item seven point three, Presentation Nevada Western Heritage Center Alliance and the Reno Sparks Livestock Event Center.
You bet, absolutely. So we're just going to do slideshow from the beginning, and you sit there, and then I'm going to take control of this, is that okay?
Yeah, listen up. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Thank you very much for affording us the opportunity to come and visit with you regarding this project that we have at hand. My name is Perry DiLoretto. I serve as the president of the Western, or the Nevada Western Heritage Center Alliance. With me here today is Mr. Tom Dolan, who is one of our Board of Directors. Also in attendance are several more members of our board. But I'm going to go through the whole list for you, just so you can have an idea who all is involved in the project. Present today is Director Mashawn Esquaga. Not able to be here today is Director Andy Morenci. With us today is Mr. Clint Thiesi, who is a member of the Board of Directors. Mary Simmons is co-vice president of our organization, is here with us. As well as Mike Torvenen, Carrie Anne Sattler, who is unable to be here with us today. We also have Mr. George Combs from the Reno Rodeo Association, who's an advisory member. Mr. Tom Case, representing the Nevada Junior Livestock Show Advisory Board, he's an advisory member. Ashley Turner, city of Reno, is an advisory member. We are awaiting an appointment of an advisory member from the Nevada Department of Agriculture, as well as a neighborhood representative from the neighborhood in the area of the Livestock Event Center. Mr. Brad Seidner, with the Reno Rodeo Association, is advisor. Eric Crump, from Washoe County, and the very able Allison McCormick from the city of Sparks. We are also waiting for the RSCVA to appoint an advisory member. The city of Sparks, through your representation, has been very gracious and generous with making yourselves available to us so that we could present this project to you. So we'll start off with what, who we are, as I've introduced, and what we're doing, and why this project is so important. The PowerPoint presentation, and in the interest of expediency, because we've had the opportunity to discuss with you, the three main points we're trying to make here is that this is a significant investment in the future of our community. It is indeed part of the heart of our community and a part of our community personality. And what it does is pay homage and honors the Western heritage that we all share. The project is somewhat complicated and involved, and let me just briefly go through what the status is with respect to ownership and operations. This is owned by the state of Nevada. It's leased to Washoe County. It's, there's a management agreement between Washoe County and the RSCVA. RSCVA subcontract out the operation of that to a company, a current company called ASM Global. The National Junior Livestock folks provide some oversight at the state level, and then the Reno Rodeo Association has a lease. I think to say the least, and I'm going to digress off of this PowerPoint, it's just so much easier for me to talk about this from the heart, and how I feel about it, and how so many of others feel about it. It's kind of a complicated arrangement, operationally. I think you're all familiar with the facility. And over the years, it has fallen into somewhat of a state of disrepair that requires some immediate attention. The opportunity has been discussed for a number of years, going back to the, you know, at least twenty years, as to what we could do with this facility to improve it, to regain the stature that it once enjoyed, and to a better job of taking care of it moving into the future. The Reno Rodeo Association has taken this effort very seriously because it is the home of the rodeo, and even though it's only for twenty-one days a year, the significance of the facility and the importance of it being in a much better state of operational capability and repair, as I said, has been discussed for a long time. Anywhere from just trying to put the money together through the RSCVA, through the county, to bring it up to standards that are minimally required for the operation of such facility, to maybe even trying to relocate it to other areas. After a great deal of study and discussion, it was determined that the best thing to do was to keep it where it's at. The Reno Rodeo Association provided significant leadership and commitment of one million dollars of rodeo association funds, which they were successful in getting a matching grant from the state of Nevada of one million dollars to pursue the dream of what this project needs and what it should look like. That has been a very successful endeavor. As a matter of fact, because of that expenditure, which was very judiciously and cautiously spent, we currently have thirty percent design plans, a business plan, and a market study that will go further to justify the needs and the requirements that we have. The project was completed on time, and indeed, the sum of money, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, was returned to the state of Nevada on this effort. When I first got introduced to the project, and it would be the second time around that I had taken a serious look at it, I was somewhat skeptical, given the magnitude of the project as a whole. But you know, you have to start off with the ultimate end game, or the dream that you're looking for, and that has been done. And further into that effort, it was broken down into what we would call more manageable phases. Once I got involved and had the opportunity to talk and visit with the very dedicated people involved in this, and how committed they were to the project, it was hard for me to not get enthused about it. The other thing that happened simultaneously or concurrently moving forward is we've identified a source of money that we would like to try and pursue to fund this effort. And the dollars are not small. The first phase of this project is something in excess of eighty million dollars. It's a large intimidating number, but there are funds available that are going to be allocated under the Recovery Act money supplied by the federal government. The state of Nevada has been allocated approximately two point eight billion dollars, which are in the process of going through the list of people and organizations and ideas that have been presented, which I understand is something in excess of two thousand, vetting these ideas and coming up with the final answers as to how this money is going to be allocated. Given the effort that's been put into this so far, and the progress that we've been able to make with respect to the business plan, the economic justifications, we think that there's an opportunity here for the community. We are board, all serves as volunteers, okay? We have one staff person that is very ably assisting us in this. We have one staff person that is very ably assisting us in this effort. We're trying to present ourselves in a organized fashion and to deliver to you, and we thank you again for the opportunity to meet with you both on an individual basis and in public here, present the idea of what we're trying to do and how we plan on going about it. Notwithstanding significant challenges that we understand exist, there's operational challenges, there's leasehold challenges, there's a lot of things that need to be cleaned up, this, the deferred maintenance on the facility. We estimate, based on previous reports that have been done by independent entities other than ours, is somewhere in the vicinity of $15 million of things that need to be done to this facility, just to keep it on, on an even par. There's operational issues, which we are developing some ideas with. We're in dialogue with the RSCVA over how this can happen. One of my concerns is if we are successful in getting this funding and being able to move this project forward, how do we keep it from happening all over again and letting the facility get into the state of repair that it is now? So we have a goal, and we would like some support and furtherance of that goal. Our goal is to make the short round in rodeo parlance. We want to make the cut. We want to be able to go to Carson City with a, an idea, a vision, a passion, and a plan that makes sense to people. And we think that that needs to start here. And I'm happy, and you should be proud, that this is the first opportunity. Sparks has been so cooperative and welcoming as then to present our opportunity. We're soliciting support. We're not asking for money. We're asking support of our idea, of our passion and our vision, enthusiastic support. So with that, I'm going to ask you again, if you see your way clear to thinking that this is a good idea, as individual council members and as the City of Sparks, to please encourage us. Encourage us that we should be emboldened to move forward, and we hope to accomplish the same with the City of Reno, Washoe County, and RSCVA. And if we can get those commitments and those resolutions from each one of those boards, and take our ideas and the progress we've made so far to Carson City, and make the appeal to have an allocation of money, of this recovery fund money, to be able to move this first phase of the project forward. Important to note, again, there are obstacles and there are issues that have to be addressed. We are very anxious to move forward enthusiastically in pursuit of those solutions to those problems, but we need to know that our community is behind us. So with that, I or any of our other directors here that you would like to direct any questions to, we are simply asking you to please consider a resolution as a Sparks City Council, encouraging you to ask us to go forward. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Dolan, did you have anything to add?
You know, I, I don't want to work anymore. I'm tired of working, no, but I, Perry called me on this thing, and it's, it's been bugging me for a long time. And I wasn't a Dodge dealer for a long time, so I just started out being a Dodge dealer. And, you know, it's just something that it's, it's Reno, it's Sparks, it's what we do in the summertime is go to the rodeo. And people have done it for years, all, all of us have been there. And so I just think that it's something that we naturally have to do, to keep the Western tradition of people in this area and these kids. The, you know, it's important that we keep the kids involved in it, and, you know, we do a lot for the kids, our dealerships and all that kind of stuff. We do a lot for education and things like that. And we're going to do the same thing with the rodeo association, with this deal that we're trying to put together. But we have to get something over there to get it, we have to, we've got to do something like this, because we need, somebody has to be the forefront guy that's going to come in there and say, hey, yeah, we'll do it. We're going to step up and do this thing, and we're going to make it right. And kids from the next five generations are going to be able to go to the rodeo, and they're going to remember it all their life. And all the kids that ever have gone through this, and your grandchildren and everybody else, they always remember the rodeo. And the rodeo is a real good American deal that you just get a good feeling when you're there. And so that's the reason I got back on the board. Perry, you know, he called me on the phone, twisted my arm, was going to beat me up and kill me and stuff like that, but, you know, it was very easy for me to do this. And yes, I'm enthusiastic about it, because I think that children and everybody else needs to be in the traditional part of life with family and things like that, and the rodeo is family. And so that's the reason that I'm, I'm into this. And I think it's one of those things that you just have to do in your life, and that's what I'm doing. So I'm going to, I'm in big in this thing, and I would love to have your support. I'd love to have you guys, you know, look at us and say, hey, yeah, that's a good idea. And yeah, we all go to the rodeo. And yeah, our kids remember the rodeo, you know, so that's why I'm here. Thank you.
I know Mr. DiLoreto can be very persuasive.
Oh, yeah, no.
I, I'm very concerned of what the payback is going to be. I've agreed to be Tom's assistant on the next thing that he comes up.
Do you have any questions from the council?
Not really a question, because in the briefing you gave us, we had the opportunity to meet with you and look at the scope of what this means. And just a comment that this is a rodeo, but it's more than that. The potential for this facility, for so many community functions, for so many groups that kind of cross-section our whole region. And, and I also see the collaboration of, of the people that are here supporting it. And, and I'm excited, because I think it's a perfect example of a public-private project that would benefit so many in our community. And, and it is history, and it is the Western heritage, but it's, it's the future too, and it's a future for events coming in. I serve on the RSCVA board, and I'm looking at, you know, what future events and can be utilized beyond what it's being utilized right now. And the potential for that is, adds to just the benefit of that. And, and I guess I would ask if, Mr. Mayor, is this something that we have to ask the city manager to bring back for future consideration for a resolution?
That would be wholly appropriate.
Okay, I'd like to do so, or Mr. Mayor, if you would like to, thank you.
Well, we definitely want to support, so the council, we're not taking a vote, but we're going to give direction to the city manager to bring us a resolution back.
I've heard you loud and clear.
Thank you, sir. Okay, resolution coming at a future meeting. Mr. Dare.
Thank you. One of the things I, I want to say, thank you for bringing this, and it's always good to see a team come together of just community leaders. I think one of the things we get to build, all of us together, is also culture, and what do we want to leave? And I remember as a kid, I, I actually, I'm going to say this out loud, I grew up in Las Vegas, don't hurt me. I grew up, I escaped Las Vegas, but I remember going on the rodeo all the time. And then even up here, it's just in Nevada, we, we have a way we do things, and we want to make sure that, that we, we celebrate them, but then also pass them down to the next generation. And I would just say, I think this is an awesome opportunity for us to celebrate something that's been in place for years. And, and it definitely takes some, some finances, but a lot of support, a lot of time. So thank you guys for being willing to step up, and I, I think I'd love, any way we can, I can help, I'd love to help do that, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you guys for coming and talking to us again, and as some of you know, I served for, for 12 years on the Department of Agriculture, the Board of Agriculture, that actually, that department is the one that received that property way back when. And one of the, the main areas that they wanted to focus on was preserving that for our, our young people. So whether it's junior livestock, junior rodeos, high school rodeos, but also in the category of FFA and 4H. And these are not just agriculture programs, that a lot of people may not realize, that these are actually helping to raise up future leaders of our businesses and, and government and, and everything moving forward. And, and having something that can successfully help them get to those positions is vital. I, I truly appreciate what you guys are doing, I love it. You have my support. The one thing that I did want to ask is, if you look at agriculture in, in Washoe County, Truckee Meadows, it's, it's a pretty small segment nowadays, not as much as there used to be. So what are some of the other, being a more diverse community, what are some of the other things that can be done here at this facility that you envision?
I'm sorry, is that a question? Yeah, yeah, we, we see, and, and thank you for making, helping me make that point. There's educational aspects, there's, there's going to be the availability of a facility. There's sporting aspects of it, educational aspects of it. You know, there, you know, the exhibit hall that's being proposed will be able to serve many different purposes. One of the things that was recognized early on, and, and what, how the Nevada Western Heritage Alliance came about is, you know, the rodeo did the heavy lifting on this early on, and, you know, they put their money up, they put their effort up there, but we recognized that it can't just be about rodeo. It needs to be much more exclusive, inclusive of the, and, and, and the entire community. And we, we're just starting down that path. We have named two additional directors, just recently, Mr. Ollie Miller, he's with the Reno Police Department, and Ethan O'Brien, who are, he's both very, very enthused about helping us move this concept together. We want to get into the neighborhood, the entire neighborhood, also, you know, the immediately surrounding neighborhood, and, and host a series of informative sessions for folks to understand that this is going to be available. So at the same time, we have our ideas, there's a lot of new ideas that we need to hear from the rest of the community about how it can be utilized. This is not a single purpose, and it's not a one-trick pony. This is, this, this facility can serve a lot of different, as it does now. We've kind of lost our way a little bit. Things that used to be here are not here anymore. Some very significant shows and exhibits, and it's because of the status of the facility, we believe, with a great effort to go in and clean up the operations and make it function better, and to sell it, and to help people be aware of not only how attractive this facility is, but how attractive our entire community is.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak in the count, Ms. Vanderwell?
I want to thank you all for this, because as a child that grew up in 4H, the daughter of a 4H extension agent, I'm excited to see these plans, and I am in full, full support of this. And like I said in our meeting, what is most exciting about this is with our improvements with the Audi District and everything else, it's going to connect Reno and Sparks. So thank you so much for taking this up and for all your time.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you, guys, thanks for coming. We'll let you know when a resolution comes back. Even though we can't tell you how we'd vote, it's looking pretty good.
Thank you.
Did you, can I ask you, Mr. Lawson, did you take our football coats away from us?
Not me personally, but, but yes, my alma mater did. Thank you, guys, thank you for coming. All right, let's move on to consent items. Anyone wishing to pull a consent item? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.4 as submitted.
Mr. Dare. I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to General Business 9.2, Consideration Discussion of Possible Acceptance of a Reimbursement from Washoe County 911 Surcharge Funds in the Amount of $27,000 for the purchase of First Due, First Due Software for Sparks Fire Department Pre-Planning and Emergency Response. Chief.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council, Jim Reed, your fire chief, and I'm up here today to give moral support for Battalion Chief Jacobus, who came to me with this idea, and he ran with it, got all the quotes, got all the information, has already been to E911 for the funding, so I'll allow him to do the presentation.
Thanks, Chief, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Kevin Jacobus, Battalion Chief in your fire department. The agenda item I have for you today is a possible acceptance of reimbursement from Washoe County 911 Surcharge Funds for purchase of a software product. The software product is called First Due, and it will, we will use it to enhance our emergency response, our pre-incident planning, and our community engagement here in the City of Sparks. How we got to today, I was able to present to the Washoe County 911 Emergency Response Advisory Committee on November 18th, and requested funding from them for the project. It was approved at that meeting, and then fast forward to December 14th, at the Washoe County Board of Commissioner meeting, it was passed there as well. The software is also used by Reno and Truckee Meadows Fire, so it does align us with our automatic and our mutual aid response, that will make that more smooth. And more importantly, for our local community, it does enhance our own abilities and our own response. So with that, staff recommends approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council? You got off lucky.
Came prepared.
You came prepared, but we, we're going to let you out there. Oh, Mr. Anderson.
I, I pulled it back.
Okay. Well, you was that close. Ms. Vanderwell, looking for a motion.
Thank you. I move to accept reimbursement from Washoe County 911 Surcharge Funds in the amount of $27,000 for the purchase of First Due Software for Sparks Fire Department Pre-Planning and Emergency Response.
Mr. Rabbit.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
9.3, Consideration Discussion of Possible Acceptance of U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services Hiring Program Grant for Federal Fiscal Year 2021 in the Amount of $500,000, with the city matching approximately $1.66 million over four years. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of council. For the record, I'm Chris Crawford, your police chief. On August 9th, 2021, I came before you requesting to apply for this grant for community oriented policing. I'm before you today, as the mayor stated, because we were granted this grant, and the final step would be seeking approval from you folks. The awarded amount is $500,000, spread over three years. If approved today, the police department would be adding four sworn positions to its complement, and would establish a team of one sergeant and three officers. As you can see in the staffing notes, the grant provides funding for 50% of entry-level salaries for the positions in year one, and tapers off from year to year, with the city paying 100% in year four. While the grant only funds three years, the Department of Justice expects the city to maintain all four positions in year four, unless the city presents hardship, such as a financial hardship in year four. As the mayor stated, the cost to the city over the next four years for the four positions for salaries and benefits is $1.66 million, spread over the four years. The Department of Justice received nearly 600 applications and awarded $139 million to 183 agencies, much of it going to large agencies like San Francisco. I am aware of two other agencies in northern Nevada receiving funding, with Sparks Police Department being awarded the largest sum by far. In the grant application, the city, through the police department, requested grant funding to create a new team of officers at Sparks Police. The team would focus efforts primarily on the west side of town, with a focus on the resources-first approach that has been so successful with the Hope Team. The team would work with community partners and other government entities, such as Washoe County Health and Human Services, the School District, and the School District Police Department, in addition to other non-government resources and entities. The focus will be on assisting families with the available resources in our community to improve their living conditions, while identifying and addressing criminal activity in our residential neighborhoods that make it difficult for families to be successful. The team will identify risk factors for youth, risk factors that may lead to a life of crime. We can then utilize crime prevention and law enforcement strategies to reduce those risks. The team will also work with apartment management in multifamily housing areas to address crime prevention strategies. The city, through the police department, is able to utilize funding to hire the four new employees utilizing the grant, but the team itself will be new employees utilizing the grant, but the team itself will be more senior supervisors and officers. In other words, we will utilize the funds in our new officer hirings that are currently occurring, but as I stated, the team itself will be our more senior staff. Staffing issues at the PD are improving, but I do not expect the implementation of this team until the fall of 2022. The grant is specifically approved for the hiring of new officers, so the fall timeline is approved with the expected hiring process and training for new officers. With that, I am here for questions, and staff recommends approval.
Chief, how many positions do we have open right today without these four?
Today, I have nine, and I have eight that tested Saturday.
So we can use these for sure.
Yes, sir.
Questions from the council? Anybody? Miss Bybee?
So Chief, this is, because it's community policing, it's kind of moving the concept of our Hope Team into our residential, really focusing on West Sparks right now, and you mentioned apartments and apartment complex. It would also, I'm guessing, encompass all the neighborhoods, but is the idea of working with your apartment complex staffs is you've got a concentrated amount of people that you can provide resources and information and work with apartment complexes, or you'd be working with residents in homes and just in those neighborhoods? So it kind of really feels like you've got a policeman on your beat that you know in that neighborhood, so neighborhood policing in that area of Sparks, that's really the focus of what you envision this team being?
Yes, ma'am. Both the homes and the multifamily housing, working with management in the multifamily to identify areas that they can improve, cleaning up trash more often, cars that tend to bring in crime, lighting that's not in the area, things of that nature that we can give them that approach as well as putting more focus into these neighborhoods.
Okay. Thank you. And I think the community policing and obviously our Hope Team has been phenomenal, but I think overall in the country, I think the move to community policing, no matter what neighborhoods you're in, is a positive one both for our police and for our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
So I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So the current Hope Team, this new team, and then likewise the new Most Team, they'll be kind of complimenting each other as well as the department as a whole, or what do you envision there?
Yes, sir. That's the envision that we see is the Hope Team will remain. They have such similar stuff. I foresee the Hope Team helping this team get started just due to the contacts and the different resources that they've identified in the last couple of years. So yes, just to kind of bolstering into the community bigger than we have for quite some time.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think it's the right thing to do. I think we've asked our policemen to do way too many things and be perfect at everything. I think this is the right idea, a great step in the right direction for our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
Yes. I move to accept the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Police and Services Hiring Program grant for federal fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $500,000 with city matching of approximately $1,660,000 over four years. Good job.
Mr. Rabbit?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just one comment.
One comment?
I just want to thank you, Chief, for applying for this grant. Grants are not easy work, and the fact that we received one in half a million dollars says a lot about your work and about this program. So I want to congratulate you and the staff that might have worked with you to obtain a grant that didn't go to every community. So thank you.
And we were going to hire them anyway, so it's, might as well be using some Fed money. I love it. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Chief.
Sure.
Nine point four, consideration discussion, possible approval of the purchase of, from Delta Scientific of high-security safety barricades and bollards for the FY22 Downtown Safety Barricades Project Phase Two in the amount of $396,950 and 64 cents.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the city council. I am Armando Ornelas, the Community Services Director.
Hey, Armando, will you move one of those mics to your thing?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'll start over. Okay, I'll start over, and I'll try to speak a little louder. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the council. I am Armando Ornelas, the Community Services Director, and I am filling in this afternoon for Amber Sosa. With this agenda item, staff is requesting approval to purchase additional safety barricades and bollards for a second phase of security enhancements in our downtown Victorian Square area to protect against potential vehicle threats during special events. The city completed the first phase of this project in May of 2020. The Phase One project included installation of an in-ground barricade system, and that original system was located here at the eastern end of Victorian Avenue, just west of Pyramid Way, as well as removable and fixed bollards and the purchase of mobile barricade trailers. For Phase Two, staff is seeking to acquire more of the same equipment. We've used it, we have experience with it, it has proven itself to be useful and readily easy for our maintenance staff to use, and so we want to stick with this equipment that we use in Phase One for Phase Two. The focus in Phase Two will be in part on securing the western end of Victorian Avenue. This is the other key entrance along Victorian Avenue where there will be in-ground barricades installed here on the western end. Again, as well as, the purchase includes two mobile trailer units that can be moved into place where and when needed. The flexibility of those trailers allows them to be moved and depending on the event configuration, to be placed in different locations. So as you look at the graphic on the screen, you'll note that there are multiple locations where it says bollards slash mobile trailer here, here on Victorian Plaza Circle, here as well, and over here. With these two additional mobile units, we will have four, and in almost every instance, those barricades have to be used in conjunction with bollards that are installed in the sidewalk to prevent, you know, a vehicle from going up on the sidewalk to get through. The purchase involves two types of high-security bollards. There are permanent fixed ones which are installed and essentially left in place, and then there are removable bollards where there's a sleeve that's placed in the ground, and then the poles themselves can be taken out when they're not needed. In terms of how we would proceed with this purchase if the council approves it today, the city will use the joiner provision that is allowed under NRS 332.195 to purchase the equipment utilizing a United States General Services Administration contract. Using the joiner process allows the city to precisely define the equipment that we want to purchase and to acquire it without formally bidding the item. This agenda item only covers the purchase of the equipment. The city will next advertise for a contractor to install the barricades and the bollards, and staff anticipates that we would be back in front of you within one to two months to award that contract for installation of the bollards and the barricades. If we move forward, construction is expected to start this spring, and hopefully all of it will be done by July 4th in advance of Star Spangled Sparks. If there are delays in delivery of the equipment, and you know, that's not a foregone conclusion here, we would work around it, either, you know, start the project and button it up for events as necessary, or if necessary, defer the start of construction. In terms of paying for this equipment and ultimately its installation, the source of funds is the two and a half percent lodging tax. That's earmarked for Victorian Score Capital Projects. You may recall last month, you approved on December 13th, or accepted on December 13th, Resolution Number Seven from the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee, and with acceptance of that resolution, the council is authorized to use up to $900,000 of lodging tax monies to purchase the equipment and install it. So that concludes my presentation, and I will do my best to address any questions that you may have.
Questions from the council? Mr. Rabbit?
The bollards on the in-ground barricades on the west side, those will be similar to the ones on the east side, correct?
Yes, there will be, there's actually two types. One, you know, there's eastbound and westbound lanes there. One set will be, you know, like is in place at the other end, and then the other will have hydraulic lifts, so if we need to let emergency personnel in, they can be quickly lowered and raised.
I like that. Thank you.
Mr. Dare?
This is Phase Two. We always knew we were in phases. Is there a Phase Three anticipated at this point? Like, we know there's another area we're saying, hey, we need to really look at?
There is a Phase Three anticipated, Councilmember Dare, and it will involve the plaza area. So we anticipate that that will be deferred until the project that's anticipated to occur on either side of the plaza, on the part of Silver Wing Development, which owns those parcels, as well as, you know, we have a plan for reconstruction of the plaza that's to be timed again based on the private development occurring on the adjacent parcels. So once all of that occurs and it's understood in terms of how that functions vis-à-vis events, then we would anticipate a Phase Three, but that's probably out, you know, two, three, four years, depending on downtown development.
One more question, just when it comes, we've obviously worked with a lot of these now, we found the maintenance portion of them to be, I mean, there are obviously maintenance involved with anything we have, that's just how it works, but are they high maintenance? Are we finding that what we have is, I mean, obviously we're buying them again, I'm going to assume that that's a yes, that we're happy with what we're found, but is that a high maintenance thing where as we do this, we start budgeting aside for maintenance of what we have, and how does that work?
Well, there will be maintenance involved over time. As you know, we just acquired this equipment and installed it in 2020, so, you know, it's very early in its lifecycle. Having said that, you know, one of the principal objectives, and in addition to shoring up the safety of events with this particular equipment, was that it reduces time for our maintenance personnel in terms of setting up for events, so that's a big savings for our staff.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify on this. So this agreement is for the in-ground bollards on the west end, and then two of the trailers, although four showing in this, we're actually only approving two because the other two were already in place? Two have already been acquired, and it really depends on what the event is and where we set up the trailers. So these are potential locations for the setup of those mobile trailers. It will vary from event to event.
And as we've seen, we can move those trailers anywhere.
They're movable anywhere?
Off city streets if we have to, if we have emergencies, whatever.
Yeah, if you had, you know, a high-level visitor indignant, and you needed to do something in terms of securing the site, they potentially could be used there, for example.
Okay, any further questions from the council? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve the purchase from Delta Scientific of high-security safety barricades and bollards for the FY2022 Downtown Safety Barricades Project Phase Two in the amount of $396,950 and 64 cents.
Forget the 64 cents. Mr. Anderson?
I'll second the motion.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Armando.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to nine point five, consideration discussion of possible approval of master license agreement AC 5819 between the City of Sparks and Crown Castle Fiber LLC for the construction, installation, and operation of small wireless communications facility within the right-of-way within the city's right-of-way. Brandon?
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor Lawson, members of council, Brandon Sandall, Assistant City Attorney for the record. The item before you proposes the approval of a master license agreement between the City of Sparks and Crown Castle Fiber LLC to address Crown Castle's construction, installation, and operation of small wireless facilities within the city's right-of-way. So to explain why we're here, give you a little history, most of you were here for the original two master license agreements, but back in 2018, the FCC issued an order requiring all government entities to allow for things like this, to allow for the development of small cell telecom equipment within government right-of-way. So in response to that, in May of 2019, the city enacted two ordinances amending city code. One was to address small cell deployment in private property, and one was in the right-of-way. This master license agreement only concerns the right-of-way, not any building permits or any development in private property. So the bill that addresses right-of-way, it's now codified in Sparks Muni Code 12, Section 42020, it governs the aesthetics, the placement, and other requirements for deployment in the right-of-way. After we approved those, or after you approved those, in May of 2019, we presented two master license agreements with AT&amp;T and Verizon in December of 2019. Both of those were approved. And this agreement is with Crown Castle, it's functionally similar, it's actually almost identical to the other two master license agreements, a couple of very small changes that don't really affect the administration of the actual agreement. But the long and the short of it is, this agreement governs how any future small cell equipment could possibly go into city right-of-way. Again, this is mainly to comply with federal law as set down by the FCC. There were several, actually more than several, there were dozens or even hundreds of court challenges to the FCC order. The City of Sparks wasn't directly involved in those, but we were monitoring those as they went through. Everything was consolidated into one appeal at the Ninth Circuit, and that was rejected. So the FCC order stands as it is right now, and all government entities are essentially required to allow this. Now, that doesn't mean that telecom companies can put small cell equipment anywhere they want in the right-of-way. It has to go through our building permit process, goes through the engineering check, the planning check, all the different city departments that are normally involved in building permits will still be involved in that. What it is, is it outlines that process, and it outlines what exactly the city requires and what configuration we need. So as of now, even though there were those two master license agreements, we haven't had any applications for any small cell deployment in the city right-of-way, but it may come in the future. So in summary, city staff believes that the agreement complies with the FCC order as upheld by the Ninth Circuit, and we believe that it ensures that any future small cell deployment is done in a safe and structurally sound manner, well, complying with federal law. So with that, I can take any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion.
Move to approve master license agreement AC 5819 with Crown Castle to address the construction, installation, and operation of small wireless facilities within city right-of-way.
Miss Bybee?
I second that motion.
They've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, on nine point six, consideration discussion of possible direction to appeal from an order denying a motion to dismiss the complaint in Forbush versus City of Sparks at all, and I'll not read the case number. Go ahead, Allison.
Fair enough. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of the city council. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services. And I'm here today in lieu of your special counsel, Jordan Walsh of Holland and Hart in the City of Sparks, excuse me, the Forbush versus City of Sparks case, and I'm asking... And I'm asking for council's direction on whether to appeal, as the agenda item title says, from the district court's order denying our motion to dismiss and to compel arbitration of this case. As you may recall, this case was filed by George Forbush, a City of Sparks employee, against both the city and other city employees regarding his discipline. Staff does recommend that council provide direction to your outside counsel about whether or not to appeal from the district court's order denying the motion to dismiss and compel arbitration. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. We don't have it?
There it is, there it is.
Mr. Dare? There we go. You're there, then you are gone. We're going with you anyways.
Good enough. I move to direct special counsel to appeal from the order denying a motion to dismiss the complaint in Forbush versus City of Sparks, ETL, case number 321 CV00163, MMD, WGC.
Mr. Anderson?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
We have no public hearing in action items, we have no planning and zoning public hearing action items. We're on to 12.1, comments from the public. And we're back, Ms. Christine Garvey.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. Christine Garvey, 1701 C Street. I want to thank the council for approving 9.3. I do, though, wish that they had taken the opportunity to show the public that they are interested in sharing information about how tax dollars are done by putting a caveat in there for direction for staff to report back in six-month intervals on the progress and success of the program. I think it's really important and probably will be driven home tomorrow. My councilperson has been exemplary in asking for scheduling information and keeping communication open with me. Unfortunately, as I stated before, that hasn't always been the case when it comes to your staff. And I understand we have some extenuating circumstances right now, but minimal communication is not even been done. As I said before, it was 87 days before I received a scheduled appointment at the request of the councilman. It has since been another 42 days since a follow-up meeting has been requested, and I have not received any communication at all except from my councilperson. And that, if you're unwilling to share public information for people in the community through your meetings and your minutes, and you're unable to get a meeting with staff or answers from staff, it shows that the public is not your first interest. I've been in public office myself, I understand it, and communication is one of the biggest issues that people have. You can solve a lot of problems by keeping lines of communication open. So I urge you, in the future, maybe you still have the opportunity to ask staff to bring back that information and share it on a bi-yearly event. You are asking us to put forward $1.66 million and probably continue to fund those efforts in the future. So thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other speaking cards. Anyone in the public wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am, come on up. State your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record. Susan Fisher with McDonnell Corano, and I'm representing today Crown Castle. And I just want to thank you for approving the MLA that was presented by Mr. Sendal today, and we want to express our appreciation to all of the staff from the city manager's office, Mr. Sendal and his staff, and also Public Works, Engineering, Community Development, all the different individuals that we've had meetings with and reached out to. They've been very responsive, and we appreciate that very much, so thank you.
Okay, we'll get you to fill out a card for us, so we have you for the public record. Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll pull it back to the council. Announcement from the Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Mr. Manager, you have anything?
Nothing today, Mr. Lawson, thank you.
Okay. City Council, Ms. Bybee?
I just wanted to comment, yesterday was officially National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I think that should be every day, and just want to thank Chief Crawford. Please extend my thanks and appreciation for the work that you do to keep our community safe, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dare? No?
Well, you got to call me, I'll be gone. Happy New Year.
This might be the big one.
Happy New Year to our staff. Thank you all for what you do. I'll tell you what, it's incredible, we couldn't do what we do without you, and from all of us, especially from Mayor Lawson, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
You're welcome, buddy.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you. And to follow up and thank for National Law Enforcement Day, I had the pleasure of going through the Sparks Citizens Police Academy and graduated last Tuesday night, and I can say, it is a great program, and I'm glad to hear that it's continuing to go, and I want to thank all of the instructors and everybody that participated, because I know it is above and beyond their duties, and I am telling everyone about it. So we need to make sure we continue on with those, so thank you very much, chief.
Great program. Mr. Abbott, you have anything? Okay. Well, then we're on to my favorite subject, adjournment.